Thank you very much for a word of welcome. It's great to be here. Let's pray. Lord Jesus, we commit this meeting to your care. We pray, Lord, that you would help us to have a great discussion. Lord, to listen to one another carefully, and then, Lord, to make decisions that are in the best interest of a community that we love. And so we commit this to you, and we pray in your name. Amen.
If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Page roll call.
Rothschild.
Here.
Kennett.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
Barnhart.
Here.
Rudehouse. James.
Here.
Samowski.
Here.
Arnold.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item number four would be public comments related to agenda items. City ordinance allows members of the public to speak and give input up to three minutes. During public comment, there can be no debate or action by the city council at this time. Pastor Steve's first.
Yeah, just, uh, just one question. I might surprise you in that, um, there's something that I like very much about bartenders, and that's that they keep an eye on whether certain patrons have been over-served, whether, whether they would be dangerous to all of a sudden get behind the wheel. So I read through, sorry about that. I read potential spam. Leave it to spam to interrupt. So I read through the BYOB proposal or ordinance, and my only question was, I'm really not a teetotaler. Um, I'm just a diabetic who often cannot imbibe for that reason. But I was a little bit concerned, is there a mechanism wherein someone is responsible for over-serving someone? For example, can I bring in three bottles to a certain establishment and enjoy that setting? Or can I bring in a keg to be extreme and polish it all off myself? And I thought that it might be wise as when considering an ordinance, that there's some mechanism that perhaps, for example, the person whose establishment it is either assumes that responsibility or somebody in the establishment. Otherwise, we could be opening up ourselves up to something that would be problematic. So that was my question.
Thank you. And I think, uh, I know you'll stick around for the discussion, but I think you'll find most of those answers satisfied. Most of those questions satisfied. Yeah. Ann? No, nothing? Zach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to the city council. Um, I'm here today on behalf of the Geneseo Chamber of Commerce to rise in support of ordinance, uh, eight point two, I believe it is, with the alcohol ordinance adjustment. Uh, we at the chamber believe that this would be a great thing for small businesses in Geneseo to be able to diversify some of their offerings, especially the service and instruction-based businesses that are outlined in there. Uh, currently, there are a lot of communities that I'd say, for lack of a better term, we compete against, who do offer, uh, some kind of activities like this. Um, maybe not to the extent of what the ordinance says, but I look at like your sip and shop events that happen throughout the Quad Cities, uh, or, um, your shops with hops and things like that. These are really popular events that are bringing hundreds of people to these communities. And I see this as a first step towards, um, being able to do something like that. That's something that the Geneseo Chamber has been looking at doing in order to help drive more traffic, especially to some of our stores downtown. Uh, they do need the help, and I want to say that again, they do need the help, and we're well aware of that. And any tools and resources that the city can provide to help bolster our businesses, uh, would be something that we would certainly applaud at the Geneseo Chamber. Um, it's a lot of fun to, uh, kind of do these pay and sip style events, right? If you've ever been, uh, it's kind of goes with it. Uh, but then also, I know that, uh, I believe the nail salon has been discussed, and that's something that you see a lot of also in the Quad Cities. Again, competition. If some customers can't do it here, what's to stop them from going and spending their money somewhere else and not spending it in Geneseo? Uh, they have that ability. Um, I do think that our business owners can be responsible and watching how they serve, and especially with the licensure, uh, that's required there, uh, they'll be able to take the classes that would, uh, give them kind of the, uh, the judgment called, if you will, to determine if someone's, uh, acting up. But I also don't think anyone's gonna act up, right? Not to say never, never, right? I'm not that naive. But, um, a lot of these environments, when you're, you know, getting a manicure or pedicure, or say you're doing something with art, I mean, this isn't some, it's not like it's a concert or something, you know? I've been there. I've been to Deval Street in Key West. I'm not saying people should be able to, uh, have their drinks going down, uh, the street. But again, another resource, another tool for our small businesses to be able to compete locally, I think is in the best favor of, uh, Geneseo and in our community's best interest, uh, because if we're not doing it now, other communities are going to be doing it, and, uh, Geneseo is not a town that should be left behind. So I would encourage you, uh, on the city council to keep the future growing in Geneseo and vote in favor of ordinance or, uh, agenda item eight point two. Thank you. And I'll be here, uh, during the discussion if anyone has any questions. So, thank you.
Thanks, Zach. Ann, did I hear you? Yours is later? Okay. Nobody in the lobby, chief? Okay. Uh, moving on. Next on the agenda would be mayor's comments, and I have none at this time. Item number six would be city council comments. Anyone? No? Okay, moving right along. Brandon, city administrator comments.
Just a couple of reminders. We'll be doing hydrant flushing on October 6th through October 10th. That's coming up soon here in early October. And then the yard waste disposal site opens back up this Saturday from eight AM to noon. It's the first of six Fall 2025 Saturdays. Um, this is for refuse customers of the city of Geneseo to bring out leaves or, um, twigs and brush clippings from their, their yard. We don't allow grass at the site. Um, the vendor that we're gonna be hiring to do the shredding of material, uh, will allow, uh, we'll be able to process both bagged and unbagged leaves. So, um, we put that out on the website today and social media. There were some feedback on that, uh, the inability to bring unbagged leaves. So you will be able to dump unbagged leaves in the pile as well, or bagged leaves if you choose to bring those. That's at the city disposal site formerly called the city burn site.
But you're still gonna burn? Is that right? I asked, somebody asked me about that, and I'm
Yeah, we, we still have, um, Chad, Poitiers Director has the ability to declare burn days, but the whole goal of this is, especially with the fall leaf drop-off, is to not be constantly burning leaves throughout the fall. So we're gonna be bringing in a shredding, um, company who processes large debris and leaves and hauls them off-site.
So is he had a yes or a no? I told him they're not gonna do it every, every Saturday.
Well, I mean
But if they have enough, will they just burn it?
I think since this topic's come up, Chad, what have we had two or three select burn times? So, I mean, Chad's been real good at leading it with the team and, and the chief and making sure all bases are covered to have select small fires as he deems necessary. And they're out each day, correct? They're extinguished each, yeah. Anything else, Brandon?
Nope.
Okay, moving right along then. Item number eight, uh, under administration, eight point one would be the utilities rate study and rate presentation.
Okay, so it's a continuation from the last meeting. The last meeting, we had Ari from Waterworth, who I believe is on currently. Hopefully, he can hear us. We did the electric and water rate presentations from the Waterworth rate study. Um, tonight, he's going to present the results of the sanitary or sewer evaluation on rates. And then we, um, can address any of the utilities anybody wants to talk about. Um, on the council, we do have a proposed ordinance for the rate changes that we discussed for, um, water and electric and what we're about to recommend for sanitary that can be moved forward. Um, the goal is that hopefully we'll, we can pass something by the October 14th meeting date and then move on on October 28th to a full budget discussion once we solidify those rates. So with that, Ari will let you do wastewater.
Awesome. Thank you for inviting me here again. And I'm gonna begin by sharing my screen. Takes a second. All right, can everyone see it? Perfect. Thank you, sir. All right. So as Brandon mentioned, we're gonna be walking through the wastewater department first, then the water. We can, we can touch on water and electric later on, but I'm gonna focus on wastewater today. And as a recap, we are financial forecasting tool. We discussed it in our last meeting, so I'm just gonna write into our wastewater department. So you can see in front of us, we have the long-term financial model present that we have shown for water and electric. You can clearly see that in this model, we find ourselves in 2028 falling below our reserve policies. That's why we were under discussion and seeing that, okay, we definitely need to adjust our rates for wastewater. And in this status quo model, we are also considering that 4% annually that we are adjusting our rates. Even if we adjust our rates annually at 4%, we find ourselves in trouble by the time we get to 28, 29, and 2030, where we're below zero, which is why the staff and myself decided to look at the rates again and go for some increases. And one of the other things was Chad and I, uh, had sat through this and chatted amazing work to make sure we accounted for all of the assets in our system when it comes to wastewater in terms of this fleet, structures, and pipes. And he noticed that out of all the input that we put into our model, there was a backlog of about $22.5 million, which is what is feeding back into our capital plans into the capital expenditure in the future. So that's a big surprise for us, and we definitely want to make sure we keep, uh, funding in infrastructure, infrastructure in the future. And they can also see we have this ACO figure, which is the annual cost of sustainable ownership, sitting at about 1.3. This is still in the discussion in terms of implementation in the future, where we want to spend around $1.3 million on capital-related activities. That could be paying off debt, spending in, uh, reserves down for that particular year, or it could be depositing funds in a savings account for future expenditures. And this gives us a nice hundred-year vision of all of our different expenses that are coming up in terms of pipes, fleet, and structures. Moving ahead, this is where we start saying, okay, taking all those two, uh, pictures into account, which is the current status quo and our asset placement schedule, what does a long-term financial model look like when you start adjusting our rates, especially with the outside users inside? And how can we prevent ourselves from going down under by 28 and 2030? We decided, you can see in this particular graph, with those results that I'll showcase in a second, we're able to stay above the red door line, which is operating threshold uh, from 28 and 2030 and beyond even. And the way we can do that is once we go into our next slide, which is you look at your current rates, you see that we have base charges. Again, it's for both inside and outside. It's a combined fee of 2027. We have some unmetered temporary construct, uh, construction user base charges, variable charges, and then the multifamily has some scaling factors for different meter sizes. We analyzed all of the customer statistics in terms of what the service connections were for each customer class, and we also looked at some of the estimates that Waterworth had in our models for the consumption and revenues for 2025 to propose rates for 2026. And what we came out with was for the inside and outside, in line with what we have for our water, we decided that we should charge outside city, uh, customers a little different rates, a bit higher in terms of their base charges will be about 1.5x of inside city, and then for the outside city variable charge will be about 10% higher than what they're paying for the inside city rates. And all other fees, that will be the inside city fees, will be increased by 5%, which is evident from this table right in front of us, which is the inside city and outside city. You can see the difference between the two. And you can see how the variable charge is increasing slightly higher than what the inside city variable charges. When we look at the revenue contribution by billing class, I know in our last discussion, I noticed that when we were slicing the pie, it was causing a little confusion. So what we did this time is we went back and said, okay, let's just compare the revenues that each customer class will be bringing in, and how much are they increasing by in the future? You can see that if you look at from 25 to 26 as a comparison, darker blue is 25, the lighter blue is 26, and you compare the revenues that the two are bringing, for the most part, all of the inside city users are gonna be increasing their revenue contribution back to the system by 5%, which is in line with what we had. And then you have the outside city residential and outside city non-residential that'll be increasing almost close to the 40% mark if you account for all the different changes in base charges and the variable charge. Lastly, you can see that we have the average bill given over year, where we have the inside city residential user clearly showing that their bills are only increasing by about 5% consistently, regardless of their consumption. It's about $1.14 if it's a 1,000, uh, gallons, and 3,000 is about 2.214, and then 581 for 12,000 gallons of usage.
Ari, I'm, I'm gonna ask her. Can you tell me what the variable charge is? What is that?
Variable charge is for the flow, the flow charge. As, uh, as the consumption goes and we collect more wastewater, it's as a charge applied on that. Continue.
It's the base charge.
Sorry, can't hear anyone.
You're good, Ari.
And that, okay, awesome. I can't see anyone, so it's a little harder to know if I answered my question. But for now, we have gone through the wastewater department. Is there any slides that we will touch back on? Any questions? Based on the recommendations?
You know, I, and I love the idea of, uh, well, I should say I love, but anyway, I like the idea of, of potentially charging people outside the city more. Part of it is, is an encouragement to potentially annex into the city. And I guess in this case, it doesn't really impact things because the, the dollars are relatively small. But how does it change our model if everybody said, hey, I wanted annexed into the city? I mean, we're kind of counting on those external dollars feeding into us. What happens if there are no more external people and they're all part of the city? Does that mess up our model?
Get some property taxes now instead.
But that doesn't feed into the wastewater and sewer. Those are all independent of a property tax, right? Yeah.
And, and you're right, sir. So if, uh, so the question, just want to clarify is, is that essentially, you're right now, if I go back to the revenue comparison between inside city and, and outside city, you can see that outside city currently, they were just using about $21,000 was the contribution 2025, uh, at least a budgeted amount that we have in our estimates. And then for 26, they're gonna be paying us about $28,000, roughly a $7,000, $8,000 increase. If they were to annex, I mean, it would take some time for them to just convert, but that would benefit us maybe by saving costs, right? I think that could help us, and we might lose a bit of revenue, but we could also reduce our, we could have cost savings, and then it could help, as someone said, with a general fund as well in terms of taxes. So we would, in, in a, in a certain way, get our compensation, compensation back as we're encouraging them back to come back to the system.
Yeah, and here it makes sense because it's a very small, thank you for that answer, very small dollar amount. I guess I'll say in totality, we talk about sewer, water, and electric. The water, I think especially, was a higher mix, a higher Yeah, I just said, no, if that messes up our calculations, like, are we assuming, have we looked at anything that says, what if 20% of those move in? And it may be, it makes no difference at all because it's such a small percentage.
Well, I think that, yeah, it, it's obviously a possibility, and I think that would be capturing in the fact of doing this review on a yearly basis
Yep, perfect.
as those scales were to slide, and, and very much like if there was some sort of unforeseen, uh, catastrophic failure that we would have to account for at the same time. You know, the review the next year would capture those things, and then we would have to look at it differently too. So, but definitely thinking
Yep.
big picture.
And is this what other municipalities are doing? It's around 5% they're increasing for this, or is this, where does this put the rate?
It's actually quite in line with other, uh, other communities, and sometimes communities have to go for 10, 15% because they aren't as proactive as us in terms of having that 4% in every year. So they have to go for a 15% or 20% increase because they haven't done a rate increase for 10 years. But others who have, uh, similar type of implementation where they have 3%, 2%, anything that's, uh, yearly increase, they usually have to go for a slight adjustment of 5% recently, especially with the uptick in costs from capital. Uh, so they are seeing about 4%, 5%, sometimes even 6% for the most part.
You're saying we're going from what we put in as a 4%, just moving that to 5%? Or is it 4% plus the 5%?
For, for, it's, it's, it's the 5%. That's what we're going for, at least for in-city. So from 4%, we're going towards the 5% in-city. And, uh, I wanted to touch on another thing as well. In our modeling, one thing that we like to do is, there's a reason why we try to also keep these guidelines in place, which is the operating threshold and cash between target, is to create a slight buffer for us in case we do lose some revenue, right? If you lose, let's say, 7,000, 20, 20% of the system joins. So we try to model that out so that we do have some buffer in terms of our needs. Awesome. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I just got one. What was the $22 million backlog? I didn't quite understand what that meant.
Oh, you don't want to know.
I think I do now.
So essentially, what we did, and the backlog that is given here, it's a straight line, is that Chad and I went through, and Chad did a lot of work here, you can speak on it even more, is we went through an asset inventory list where we got all of the different pipes that are in our city, and we noted all them down, when were they installed, what type were they, was also the place in value. After doing all of that data, putting it in, and what the estimated service life is, it turned out that there was about $22 million, $22.5 million in pipes that was supposed to be due for replacement prior to 2025. Now, I can add, and I've said this to Chad as well, is that perhaps out of the 22 million, some portion of it could be that they're in good standing and they're in good condition. So even if they're past their estimated service life, they could still continue. But more or less, whatever was in place and were supposed to be replaced is coming due in the next five years. And that's what the backlog is trying to represent.
So that doesn't change the ASCO then, the maintain? If you're not maintain, if you're not putting into that, what needs, will probably need to replace in the next five years?
This is, this is included of the 100-year. It's giving you almost a 100-year average, but in some years, you are seeing quite low in terms of replacement. However, that's why it's just an annual average that you have there. But in terms of, if you want to address the backlog, it's a question for the community, is that if you want to address that backlog, I'm sure that the annual cost of sustainable ownership for the next few years is definitely gonna rise up even beyond the 1.3 that we have in there. But that's just telling you the 100-year average all the way up to 21, 20.
Question, Craig? I mean, the, yeah.
What's the plan for that? Well, because it's only gonna go up as we go.
Well, as Ari was saying, there's, there's, that's not a definite number specifically, is it, Chad? I mean, that's, but what that number should be, we should all be mindful of the fact, in fact, Brandon and I were talking about it tonight, is the, it's a reflection of the importance of when we, when we do a street project or we do a major capital project, that we do it all the way. As a matter of fact, with the Orange Street project, and that's a much smaller scale project with, in instance, water services, they installed the main, didn't make any of the connections. Now, we've spent the better part of two years, not, not every day, obviously, but two working years making all those connections. Now the street is like Swiss cheese, so we're gonna have a street that's gonna be in need of some significant repairs down the road. So I think going forward, as long as the council, you know, we all have the awareness that when we do something, we do it top to bottom and complete. We, you know, we're gonna have to figure out, and that's part of what we did with Red Zone and identifying troubled sewers. We're gonna have to start to pick away at some of these along the way.
Okay.
But it's a problem.
Okay, so what's the plan for that?
Well, I mean, again
Is that in the budget then? Is that what they're doing? They'll bring that to the budget? To show how they're gonna do it each year and kind of get this backlog down?
Correct, as projects
I understand it's an estimate amount, but you, what you're, what you're kind of saying, if somebody came with us with $23 million, we could get caught back up right away.
Well, it'd be a lot more than that because the $23 million only represents the actual collection system underground. You'd then have to fix the road and everything else that goes with that.
Okay.
But I think, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Craig.
So what we're, so in the budget, we'll bring something to the table that says what we're addressing so we can get this down?
Yeah. And that's some of what we've identified with looking to do.
But that's not part of the 1.3. The 1.3 is just to stay where, where we're at and not do any, right?
Now, so
Very small scale, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to say, just to say that, uh, the 1.3 million dollars is the annual cost, it's just to say that if, basically taking the 22.5 million under account, and if we just spread on average, that's when we start splitting out, because you can see some years. I would say that normally, it's just giving an average number for 100 years. You would want to focus on maybe being higher than the 1.3 average, especially since the further or longer you wait, the more the backlog starts building, and then eventually we find ourselves that if something fails, you'd spend even more money on that and so on. So I would say maybe the, it's to focus on the 22 million, the 1.3 is just giving you an average number, 100 years, how much we should be spending.
But any projects going forward, we're not turning into Swiss cheese, or however you're saying, we are, we're doing it all the way then?
Yeah.
Right. And we do have a plan. I mean, I think Red Zone gave us a roadmap or a template to begin to chip away at some of this with sewer linings and identifying anything. I, I know there was different levels of, of, uh, I guess, yeah, how essential the work was. So as Chad begins to look at these projects, we'll, we'll definitely wrap them into future years to begin to, to reduce that number and, uh, reduce that backlog, I guess.
Well, I'm not sure you're gonna reduce the number because what I've learned from you is each year it gets more expensive.
Well
So it's not gonna be any cheaper.
The project itself, but, but the investment in the asset, you're making an investment in the asset of the city as a whole, right? So while it might be expensive to do so, that will be reflected in, in the, in the backlog or the work that needs to be done. As long as, like Ari said, we stay current with that and, and work on that and not just let more time elapse because then that gets further down the road too.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions on wastewater? Does anybody have any questions on water or electric? Okay.
Okay, so I do. Well, I guess, I'm sorry. So the sewer was just 5% across.
Unless you live outside of city limits.
Got it. Then I get to see if I'm in the right place. So, water. The capital improvement charge. Didn't we, or, yeah, didn't we have some kind of little worksheet that we went through? Or maybe that was, um, how'd you get from 15 point, how'd you get to 15.61 from 15.05? Anybody? Yeah, didn't we establish that? It might have even been five years ago. So it's the same formula that we go through every year. Right. And we base it off of the budget which you have proposed the capital. Got it. Okay, I just needed to refresh that. And so that's the number for this time.
And the three items that we have in that capital line item are the North State Street project for next year, the water lines underground going there, um, the water improvements, which is, uh, that's the deep well engineering, I believe, for 300,000, and then lead line replacement for 300,000. That's how we get to that 1561, but for the rest
I knew we had a thing. I just couldn't remember how we came up with that. That was my question. Sorry, I wasn't here last time.
Do we have like a communication plan or like for all the rate increases, um, just to kind of clearly lay it out for like apartment owners? Um, just because it's a lot of changes other than, you know, oh, my bill's different.
Yeah, how are we gonna communicate this?
Hmm.
Good question, you said.
Well, I, so like on the agenda cover sheet, I don't know if we can switch back to the agenda, but, uh, so I've kind of laid everything out in layman's terms, how everything is changing, but something like that we could use to, to send out, um, to landlords or, uh, we don't have an established plan right now, other than you're gonna get your bill and we're publicly gonna pass these new rates, but, um, open to suggestions. Sip and learn, about great. Sip and learn about rates, yeah.
I, I would like to say that Waterworth, like we can help you a little bit as well. Like we just advise you in terms of what other communities have done, because I recently had a community go and increase rates by fifty percent. And they had to communicate that to the public. So we could advise you a little bit and help you with the communication side of things. But yeah, it can come down to all the different needs, uh, modes of communication or in terms of like social media, mailing everyone ahead of time. It does increase and so on.
What's it cost to do a mailing? For the bills. You don't get a, not a bulk rate for zip code or something or?
Oh, no bulk rates on the stamps, no.
Know that.
Emails would suffice too, right?
We have the ability, we do, we do a newsletter to all customers and then on the billing, we can put notes on the billing. So. We could put, uh, notes on there and direct them to a website that explains things even in further detail, like getting into.
So you should probably do that before the rates change?
Rates changing, da, 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 see here for more information. That'd be helpful. See when people call, you can say, hey, it's been on your last few bills. Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah, and that's how we communicate a lot of the things like the hydrant flushing or e-waste and is through the newsletter and putting notes on the bill so that.
Where's the newsletter? Because I've never seen it.
What's that?
Where is it? You add it with the bill?
Yeah.
Is that where the newsletter goes?
Comes with your utility bill, yeah. Correct, Jamie?
I just throw that part away.
Example A.
Yeah, they work hard on that.
You should read.
Anybody else have questions? Ari, we're not going to ask you to run through the whole presentation again and the rest of the slides unless the council has water or electric questions beyond what we just did with sewer, so.
Okay.
Yes. At least for five. We have a five-year relationship with Ari to bring him back every year.
And I'm just telling you, if this changes to fifty percent next year, you're on your own.
Yeah, I think we can end the Zoom. Appreciate you being here, Ari.
Perfect. Thank you for inviting me. All right, everyone. Take care. Been a pleasure. Bye.
Power outage? Rollouts in action.
Yeah, there goes the generator.
Is there a call? Yeah. All right, so. Okay. Well, we're still on eight point one. I would entertain a motion, I guess, unless there's more discussion.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to recommend the approval of O dash twenty-five dash ten to the city council meeting and to be placed on the consent agenda.
I recommend it. Whatever you just said. So moved.
Okay, we had our first by Arnold, a second by Samoski. Roll call?
Rothschild?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Rudehouse?
Yeah.
James?
Yes.
Samoski? Arnold?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, eight point two under administration with the amendments to chapter ten, article three, alcoholic beverage sales. Adding a service, a business, a BYOB license. Okay, so this is something we bring forward for council consideration. Attorney Rice, Price. Ansel Glenc helped us establish, Bryce, yeah, Price, uh, helped us establish this. Uh, this comes after the mayor, Paige, myself, I've had some discussions with businesses about, um, creating a new type of license or something so that, um, they can have these things with service businesses where they have, um, trainings or like we were referencing earlier when Zach spoke, like the sip and paint events. Um, or service-based businesses. So we're talking about like nail salons or hair salons. They can have customers bring in beer or wine. The business owner still has to carry dram shop insurance. They're still ultimately responsible for what happens inside of their business and um, they still have to be, um, Basset trained and be able to recognize the signs of intoxication and these things that are required under any liquor license in the city of Geneseo. So, I don't know, you guys want to add anything?
Yeah, to answer Pastor Steve's point, it's all baked in. If you've got a license, you're automatically responsible for all that. You are liable for anybody who leaves your premises. In an intoxicated state, so even though they are committing the act, might be involved in whatever it is. From public intoxication to drunk driving, uh, if there are damages, you, because you permitted them to drink too much, are liable under the dram shop act. So it's all baked in. That's why we're doing the licensing as opposed to a, a see no evil approach to this kind of thing. Um, it's to remind everybody that, okay, uh, but there's an obligation to, to, uh, play big brother here and monitor what's going on. And in fact, the people who, while it's bring your own beverage, it's not open your own beverage. The opening cannot be done by the person who brought it. The opening has to be done by the business proprietor. And they're not supposed to do it until they're certain they're not being over served. So BYOB is not the same as open your own beverage. And that's all part of the Basset training, training process that goes on.
And just for the council's understanding, that, that the whole discussion stemmed from, you know, just to be honest, there were two businesses that were doing these types of activities. And to their credit, when we learned of them, they complied without any issue, but um, this type, some of these types of settings were occurring. Um, so now that led to a deeper discussion of how we can do this to, that would still accomplish what they want, the cork and canvas type setting or sip and paint. And, uh, like the nail salon type setting. So that's where the discussion came from.
Anybody concerned about this at all on the council? That doesn't surprise me. I'm just concerned that we're opening a can of worms that, what if people, you've got it listed at five limited, what if everybody wanted it or they thought it was a great idea? And how does the, I mean, I, I understand that there's other communities, larger communities doing it. My concern is, I don't know, I'm just.
Well, it's not free.
I get that. And I get that they have to licensing. I get, they have to do all that. But how much, I mean, are, are other businesses going to do that?
It's expensive.
I, I don't know. I have no idea.
Depends on how many people you intend to serve.
So it's based on if they have twenty people in there, but then like the next, they have a bridal party of forty, then it's, it's per or?
When you go apply for insurance, you have to tell them what you expect in terms of numbers. And I don't think any of these businesses are serving forty people at a time. But if they are, then they need to be truthful about that. And if they don't, if they lie to their insurance company, then that's a different problem. We can't control that. But it goes with the expense. It's not inexpensive to add this. And I, I don't know why an auto shop, for example, that provides a service would offer sip and learn events at their auto shop. They, they're not going to want to pay for the dram shop. But if they do and we have a license available.
So are we limiting this? It says five. Are we limiting to just five? Or is this something to be like, somebody else opened something else and now we have to make it six or seven or what's the?
You don't have to. That's why you put a limit on it.
Right.
They have to come here and get you to approve and more of them.
You know, I just, one, you, you said you're concerned and I understand that. And I just, one conversation I had with the chief is, I think it speaks volumes to the current liquor license holders we have, right? Because the police department has almost no enforcement in any of our establishments. So once again, the community we are founded of, the people we are made up of, when they take these things, they take these responsibilities seriously. And they do them right. So I think, I think our past history supports trusting in people, albeit, uh, uh, someone running a paint studio or somebody running a nail studio to, to take, uh, their responsibilities seriously. I, I don't, I don't, I, I just don't see any problems in the past that would lead to a concern of this.
I'm not concerned about what happened in the past. I'm concerned about what might happen in the future.
But I think you have to look at your future to know, you, you have to look at, your past speaks volumes of where you're at it, right?
I agree.
If you're a community that has nothing but problems, you're going to continue to have problems unless you root them out. When you're a community that has very little problems, that doesn't just happen by chance. That happens by who you are as people and what you're made up of.
But my other concern is we're only basing this off of alcohol. Every time we want to increase revenue or build the city or something. It always seems to be based on, we did it with the gaming, which I get, I, I surveyed my people. But I'm not sure this is something they would be good with, so I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not here telling the council that this is going to increase revenues to the city. Zach is, Zach is saying it'll be good for, yes, obviously, if it's good for the businesses, it'll be good to the city. There's obviously a trickle-down effect. But I'm not here telling the council that this is a good idea for that reason. I believe, and I've said it many times under different discussions, a fair, a fair playing field, right? We have to be mindful of, and we don't have to follow the trends, but we have to be aware of what's going on in other communities. And decide then if it makes sense or if it seems like a good fit. Frankly, I don't see somebody wanting to bring a bottle of wine to a painting event. I don't see that as a problem.
What are your concerns, Craig?
The, my concern is someone goes out, like Attorney Price says, and they have more than they should. And they drive out and now they're at risk. I have a problem with that because of their bars.
What's to prevent someone from drinking at home and driving? I mean,
Absolutely nothing, but.
The fact that it's at a paint studio.
Absolutely nothing, but I'm not approving of them doing it at home. I didn't have to approve that. Uh, this is a city vote that I have to vote that says I, I, I support this and I'm not sure I can support that. That's what I'm, that's my concern.
An idiot, whether they're at home, whether they're business or whether they're at a party.
We don't need to get into a debate about idiots. We need to stay focused on the ordinance. What the ordinance entails, what the ordinance wished, wishes to solidify for the community.
Yeah, I'm not sure this does, so.
Okay, and, and everybody's entitled to a vote.
I, I really wanted to understand your concerns to make, to, to understand them. It's a very valid concern.
One point before we take it, uh, show them the draft, the ordinance as it exists. We're going to take E out, which talks about customers serving themselves. That's not, we're going to take that out. So when it comes to you for final approval. What is now currently E will be out. Customers, customers cannot serve themselves.
So we don't want this on the consent agenda?
Well, I don't think you've got unanimous consent to put it on the consent agenda.
Doesn't matter. If you pass it, it goes on consent agenda. It's up to someone then.
Well, it'll be presented without E. Then it can be put on the, it can move it forward as amended. Yeah, move it, you can move to move it forward as amended.
Okay.
Can I say something really quick? There were people that have been doing this for a long time without dram insurance, liability insurance, without any sort of Basset license. This is just a way that the city can ensure that these people are doing everything they need to do correctly. And if they do that, then we can assume that they would make sure that they would do everything so they're not on the hook for anything. I mean, this is, this was kind of like the best case scenario for the situation that they were wanting. Not, maybe not specific places, but in general for people to be able to drink in serviced style businesses.
For two businesses. But one fairly new.
There's been multiple throughout the years that, that even since I've been city clerk that have wanted to do it, but we just didn't have the licensing for it.
So why do we have the licensing now?
Because there's more and more people coming up and bringing it to all of us that want to do it.
Yeah, I just want to maintain a relationship as long as I'm in this seat where we are, we are arm in arm with our, arm in arm with our business people. And they complied when we knew this was going on and asked, okay, how, what could we do to help make this possible or facilitate? There were, I, I don't, I just don't ever want to see the community given a situation where like, well, we'll do it anyways. Either we do turn our back, not that that would happen, or that's just, that's not good for them. It's not good for us. So. I'm just praising the compliance of those that were involved in this setting. And being patient with us to bring something forward. Now it's for you guys as a governing body to decide whether or not this is a good fit.
But do all the businesses know that we're passing this? I mean, you said that there's more and more people doing it. So how would they know if it's okay that they can do it? So you said there's two of them that have been doing it for years that.
Nope, not years.
Well, whatever. Let's just say they didn't know.
Yeah.
And they, we finally found out, now they're complying.
Okay.
So what does that stop from somebody else not complying and just, until they get caught?
I mean, we can only, we can only take enforcement on, on things as we become aware and, and, and actually, we can, we can, we, we are actually proactive. I, I guess I would, I don't think there's a, uh, anything that we do as a community, as a city, where we're not proactive in what we do. The police are proactive in what we.
I agree with that.
So I, I think that's all we can.
I just don't, the selling point is not, well, everybody else is doing it. That's not a selling point for me.
Nobody's saying that, uh, with all due respect, no. We're talking about, can I?
Not trying to.
The mayor recognized it for a second.
You have the chair.
No, the chair is to my right. And he recognized me and the enforcement conundrum is when you have a licensing scheme, you get people to rat each other out. They've paid all the money for dram shop. They paid the licensing fee and to watch another business in town do it for nothing, to skate for free, that gets reported. And so then you get your enforcement mechanism is more robust than if you don't have a licensing fee and it's, I see no evil. Everybody here took an oath to enforce the laws of this city and the constitution. Doing a see no evil thing to something you know is going on is not appropriate. It's not consistent with your oath.
The ones I really only see and people that you said were hidden doing in the past is I, your, I can see your art uh, galleries wanting to do it and your salons, whether it's nail or hair. I could see a hair salon, what, you know, a bridal shower, bridal group coming in on a Saturday morning. Mimosas and croissants and whatever. I mean, but it's up to, like they said, it's up to the owner of that hair salon to distribute those drinks and make sure nobody gets too stupid or crazy. Like Paige said, I bet it's been going on the hair salons around here and we haven't even noticed it. And now this is going to force them, like Attorney Price said, this is going to force them to do it legal-like.
And Craig, you know, I walk with you a, a little bit. I do have some reservations on this. And, and historically, and Dirk would remember it in the past as well. It, it seems that we're always kind of expanding liquor opportunities and expanding liquor opportunities. And at some point, you know, uh, what are we really controlling if it's prevalent everywhere? That being said though, uh, we, we do have a responsibility though to look past our own maybe personal beliefs and what have you and represent uh, as best we can, uh, our, our constituents. And I view this as pretty much as Paige laid out, is that it's occurring, we know it's occurring anyway. And it's always better, I believe, if we're at least aware of it, put appropriate policies and curves in place to, to manage it as best as possible. And so that's, you know, why I would be supportive of this in that I do believe that while I don't necessarily think it's maybe the, you know, a great idea, I'm not that business owner. You know, I'm not necessarily the person that maybe enjoys that. And sometimes as an elected official, you have to kind of step back though too and, and recognize that there are different views and stuff on some of these things. And, uh, I think this is a very reasonable approach to accommodate it and control it and manage it in as positive a ways as possible.
Paul, would you turn it back? Thanks, Greg.
There was, um, I mean, there, there's a huge responsibility that these people, and when they take their training, they'll know. There was an incident in Geneseo last year. And, um, they come down pretty hard, real quick. And there's a lot to be answered for to the owners. So, um, they need to, if they take their training, they should think about that. Because they're opening themselves up to it personally. So.
No, one, one thing, if I may, I don't think these events are for power drinkers.
No.
They're just people going in to have a beer, sit down or whatever, or have a glass of wine.
Couple hours.
Yeah, they're not going to pound drink after drink after drink after drink. These kind of events are not. Yeah, they're not gonna pound drink after drink after drink after drink, these kind of events are not built for that.
Yeah.
My opinion, sorry.
No, you're you're fine, Martin, Zach, did I see your hand at one point?
No, I just play a little, I'm sorry.
Okay, just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna miss anybody, I want everybody to have their opportunity.
I'll second if nobody's second.
Was there a motion? Did you make it?
Uh I move to amend the ordinance O twenty-five eleven, section ten, one forty-six um by striking subsection E.
Second.
Motion by Rudehouse, second by Barnhart, roll call.
For the minutes, it's the small E, not, okay.
Yeah.
So are we just passing the amendment or agreeing to the amendment, that's all we're doing right now, right?
Okay, just. We'll bring back the amended one to the city council.
Oh, so then we vote on the actual motion, on the actual ordinance?
Amended.
Correct.
If this passes, okay, roll call.
Arnold?
This just striking the part on customers serve themselves.
Yeah, you don't, you're allowed.
Uh, yes, on the amendment to strike that.
Samoski?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Rudehouse?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Kennett?
Yes.
Rothschild?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Now I make a motion on the other one?
Sure.
Motion to uh recommend approval of O twenty-five eleven and O twenty, R twenty-five thirteen to the city council meeting and place on the consent agenda. As amended.
Motion by Arnold.
I'll second.
Second by Barnhart, roll call.
Uh Rothschild?
Yes.
Kennett?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Rudehouse?
Yes.
James?
No.
Samoski?
Yes.
No.
Okay, motion carries, eight point three under administration would be the O dash twenty-five dash twelve amendment, amendments to chapter twenty-four regarding nuisance weeds and grass.
Right, so Chief Dusterhoff had a number of conversations with attorney Price um and myself on things to update our nuisance ordinance to put some better tools in the toolbox for the police department and code enforcement on nuisance weeds. Um so everybody knows, we've had some of these conversations recently and and uh public comment as well and things that we can do to have some more enforcement tools, so Chief Dusterhoff can speak on this as well, but to me, you know, one of the the key things in here is uh this defines nuisance greenery as all vegetation that impedes uh the ingress, egress to your home or walk paths, and so if we have, and uh if it's climbing over property lines, so in a lot of these situations we've dealt with, you have giant weeds or things growing into the neighbor's yard or growing over doorways and windows, and this would allow us, you know, to write um those homes.
Yeah, it's been a nuisance complaint for many property owners, so this gives us that extra tool to be able to enforce that and get compliance from them.
My only question was, eight inches is nothing. Like, how is this blocking things when we say eight inches?
What's the current?
Yeah, that's for grass, right?
It just said anything over eight inches, if it's blocking visibility in this, in the summary.
I, okay.
Unless I'm mis, unless I'm misremembering. I love, I I totally agree with the ordinance, I was just kinda surprised at eight inches.
Yeah, the the eight inches is really addressing lawn grass in here, um or that's the intent.
Greenery over eight inches that interferes with entry exit to a property?
Uh let's see.
Or its improvements or encroaches to a neighbor's property? That just seemed really low, I first read it as eight feet. But then I was like, and I realized it was eight inches, I just, I just was curious where the inches came from, because I mean, that's.
That's, that's my agenda summary, but if you look at the actual ordinance, um I did write it that way in the agenda summary, but the actual ordinance does address it as just grasses and then it does also define that you can have uh like cultivated native grasses in your yard, but it's the uncultivated.
Yeah.
I must have missed that, so thank you.
Things that are true, it's like if there was a animals call at your house and your front door is so overgrown, we can't get through to help you.
Motion to rec. Do you want to say something else?
No, no, no.
Motion to recommend approval of O twenty-five twelve to the city council meeting and place on the consent agenda.
Motion by Arnold?
Second.
Second by Swanson, roll call.
Arnold?
Yes.
Samoski?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Rudehouse?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Kennett?
Yes.
Rothschild?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, eight point four under administration would be R dash twenty-five dash fourteen, amending the schedule of meetings for the remainder of twenty twenty-five.
So the November city council meeting falls on Veterans Day this year on eleven eleven twenty-five. Um it's a federal and a city holiday, city hall will be closed on that, they were recommending to move and amend uh the schedule of meetings to have that meeting on eleven twelve on that Wednesday. We'll get martyred if we do this.
Sure. Sure. That's what it takes.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of R twenty-five fourteen to the city council meeting and to place on consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Barnhart, second by Arnold, roll call.
Rothschild?
Sure. Yes.
Kennett?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Rudehouse?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Samoski?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, item number nine on the agenda would be the payment of city and utility bills.
Motion to pay the bills as presented?
Motion by Arnold, second by Samoski, roll call.
Arnold?
Yes.
Samoski?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Rudehouse?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Kennett?
Yes.
Rothschild?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, item number ten would be public comment related to all their items, city ordinance allows members of the public to speak and give input up to three minutes during public comment, there can be no debate or action by the city council at this time, Anne.
Yeah, so the the council recommended uh republic services for the five-year renewal contract and uh we'll be bringing back a contract for the council to review for that in a coming meeting.
Okay, did you say that there were three proposals that did come back?
Correct, yeah.
And where are the other two, I never did find it at any point.
Yeah, so uh Lake Shore Recycling LRS and uh Millennium Waste out of uh Mylan, yeah.
Thank you.
That's it, Anne.
Is there a spreadsheet on the things someplace on the website that I haven't run across, just for your information? How they stack about, you know, for each other?
Yeah, so the the review committee, we did not publicly post um all the bid prices, um that's, we discussed it in the last meeting, but if you'd like to review that information, we'd be happy to provide it to you, yeah.
I was just wondering if I didn't see it and blame from the website.
Yeah, we didn't post their full proposals um and every line item there.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
You bet, Pastor Steve?
I just wanted to thank the council for a thorough answer on the question that I had raised concerning BYOB and very interesting discussion, but I was pleased that there was forethought about that concern that I had raised, so thank you for the discussion.
You bet. Chief, nobody in the lobby, okay, all right, uh item number eleven would be adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Arnold?
Second.
Second by Barnhart, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, we're adjourned.
Yesterday is Chris' birthday, he wouldn't let me sing at the Rupp's.